Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the executive minutes of December 9, 2019.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? Were you had discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. A motion for the regular minutes of December 9, 2019.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? Go call vote. Please, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And a motion for the regular minutes of December 19, 2019. Please note, there was no executive session on that day, so there's only regular minutes.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. Happy New Year again, for those that missed the reorganization meeting. The, Rachel, welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Our work is now beginning because our Waverly Christmas tree came down today, so it is time to get really, get back to work. And I want to say, it was a great holiday season, the downtown looked beautiful, and it was bustling throughout the season, so thanks to all that make this town so special. And speaking of special, and to toot our own horn, I want to say, I think no one does a reorganization meeting like Madison does. Several of us got to visit some other towns, and it wasn't even close. It's certainly an honor to have Governor Murphy here to give the oath of office to Maureen, Maureen, now you're over on the side, Rachel and me. And there's a lot of thank yous, some I mentioned that day, but some I don't want to have forgotten. One, Liz Osborne, I drive her crazy as we get to the, get close to the meeting with all the appointments and filling all the positions, and she keeps her smile and gets it all out there. Also want to thank Michael Plessier for handling logistics, including working with the governor's office to make sure his visit went as smoothly as possible. And then, all the special touches that we're able to do here in Madison that we don't necessarily see in the other towns. From Pastor Kate Hillis doing invocation, she's from Messy Church, our patriotic celebrations with the pledge, Rose City Songsters National Anthem. And then, not to forget the Bagpipes by our Public Works Director Ken O'Brien, really set the tone as we all marched in here. And I can't forget the Director of Special Touches, Council President Carmela Vitale, for all your work, making sure everything was running smoothly, and including my office was presentable for the governor, so thank you. I did, to see what the impact a meeting like that can make, I received an email from Yana Kane Estrig, who was a Madison resident, who came to the council meeting and was so impressed, she took the time to send an email and also write a, wrote a poem about Madison. She will be coming to a future meeting, hopefully our next one, to read that poem, so I will share that email when she arrives, and we will hear her share the great poem for Madison. Also have a, an announcement to make related to our affordable housing. At the close of business on Friday, we received notice from the Department of Environmental Protection, that the state has asserted jurisdiction on the MRC housing site. We had heard ten years, ten, ten months ago, that they would not assert jurisdiction, but they have reviewed it and have decided to assert their jurisdiction. This will affect the process, as we need to work through the diversion process now with both the state and the county. For this reason, we are postponing the January 23 scoping hearing that was advertised, and we will announce a new date when we can coordinate with the, both the state and county. And so, move through the process, we will update all the information on the website, and we'll do the, all official noticing, including noticing those that receive the official notification for the 23rd. So, please mark your calendars, that the meeting on the 23rd has been postponed, and we will announce a new one again, once we coordinate with the state and county. I want to announce the employees of month for January. Kathy Notine and Mary Vacarella of the Borough Clerk's Office have been selected as employees of the month for January, for the efficient system they created for processing requests for the 2020 pet licensing renewals, which is an additional task that they had to take on with the retirement of Joanne Grillo. And our anniversary for the month of January, Sergeant Lisa Esposito, the first sergeant in the Madison Police, of first female sergeant in the Madison Police Department, is celebrating her 25th anniversary on January 5th, so she already celebrated, so if you see her, please congratulate her on 25 years. And now, I have, going to come down and do a couple of oaths of office. Tom, you want to come on, come on up. So, holding the Bible is John's grandfather, who is retired firefighter from Carney. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for continuing the great family tradition. I state your name.
I, John W. Downs.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Volunteer firefighter Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
Volunteer firefighter Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering. Place your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Katsopolos.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Volunteer firefighter hose company number one.
Volunteer firefighter hose company number one.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear truth, faith.
And I will bear truth, faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering. Chief? Take your hat off.
Congratulations.
All right, reports from committees. Finance Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Department has been very busy over the last few weeks, closing up the 2019 books and preparing for 2020. One example is Sandy in the Payroll Department. At the beginning of the year, she updated the payroll system for 2020 with vacation dates, updated wages, and other information. The Accounts Payable and Purchasing Department have been working with the Edmunds Budget System, getting it set up for 2020. The Edmunds System is used by all departments to track purchases and make sure everyone stays within their respective budgets. The Tax Department is preparing for the first quarter property taxes. Reminder, payments are due on or before February 1st. The Chief Financial Officer has been working on the 2020 budget docs and presentation materials. This evening, we're going to review the five-year capital plan, as well as the 2019 activity in open space, recreation, and historic preservation trust fund. Also on the agenda is introduction of two of the capital funding ordinances, one for 2020 road construction projects, and one for 2020 road milling and overlay projects. Bob Vogel discussed all of these programs at the December 9 council meeting. We have a bunch of meetings coming up for the upcoming budget hearings. I'm hoping that more people show up for it. It's one of the most important things that I think we, as the council members, do, so, you know, please come and listen to it. So, the first one is January 27. There's going to be a presentation on utilities and the utility surplus on February 10. The draft budget will be presented. February 24, the department heads will be here to discuss their goals and objectives, and as, as well as their budget needs. March 2 is a special meeting. This is going to be a budget discussion. At the end of this meeting, the goal is to give CFO instructions, so that he can prepare the official state budget documents. On March 30, we're hoping to introduce the official state budget document. As per state statute, the document will then be posted on, online, and available for review for, for 28 days. April 27, the council is scheduled to vote on the adoption of the budget. Transparency is very important to all of us. Residents are reminded that all budget material is posted on the annual budget process page on RoseNet. If you have any questions about the budget, please talk to one of your elected officials, or the administrator, or chief financial officer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, public safety, Ms. Belling.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, tomorrow night, they've got a great meeting scheduled. Police, Madison Police Detective Ken Shannon, Special Agent Tim McMahon, McMahon, in conjunction with the Madison-Chatham Coalition, will be presenting Hidden in Plain Sight Program. This is an interactive parent program outlining the signs of teen substance abuse in homes. Parents will be informed about current drug trends, and provided with powerful insights on what to look for in a teenager's bedroom. The program will begin at 7:00 PM at the Chatham High School Auditorium, and is intended for adults and parents of teenagers. From the Fire Department, during the month of December, the Fire Department responded to alarms, still alarms, investigations, medicals, for a total of 103 responses. They also performed 45 fire prevention inspections, and 26 smoke CO resale of home inspections were made. On Monday morning, January 6, at approximately 10:56 AM, the Fire Department responded to the Presbyterian Church on Green Avenue for an activated carbon monoxide alarm, and when they entered the building, their meters started going off crazy with elevated levels of carbon monoxide. Further investigation led the firefighters to the boiler room, where it was then discovered that the flue pipe for the boiler had come apart, so they were able to shut that down, and then they spent about an hour ventilating the Presbyterian Church. Then, on Sunday morning, January 12, at 8:36 AM, the Fire Department also responded to a residential structured fire at 191 Kings Road. It was attached garage. There were no injuries, and the fire was contained within a couple of hours, and there's just damage to the garage and a car. And congratulations to volunteer firefighter Santiago Lopez upon completion of his firefighter one training, and obtaining his fire one certification issued by the New Jersey Division of Fire Safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. As you heard from Carmella, we are putting bid documents together to go out for the road reconstruction in 2020, as well as other projects, including the renovation of the bathroom facilities at Dodge Field. Public Works is also in the process of constructing the new recycling center down at the John Street, which would, will go a long way to helping people recycle and stay environmentally correct. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, materials for flyers have been drafted, and will be used to help identify people who would benefit from the Northwest CAP Calling Program, and to recruit new volunteers. The January Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting was held at the Madison Community Arts Center in coordination with the senior center lunch. We had a group of 15 seniors participate and stay and participate in the meeting. Two people indicated that they were interested in volunteering for the Calling Program, and a new person has asked to join Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. From the Director of Business Development, the Downtown Development Commission, the DDC will hold its annual reorganization meeting this Thursday, January 16, at 7:15 PM, in the second-floor committee room, which is right next door. Regular meetings of the DDC meeting are held on the third Thursday of each month, and are open to the public. Chamber of Commerce, the 2019 limited edition ornament slash sun catcher will remain on sale for $20, and can be purchased at Madison Pharmacy, Stuart Morris Awards, Gifts and Flags, and the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. The Chambers Annual Holiday Party is Tuesday, January 14, tomorrow night, at 6:00 PM at Rocco's. All are welcome, 35 vowels per person, for a buffet, cash bar, and door prizes. It's really, that's a fun event. The Taste of Madison is Monday, March 23, at the Brookley Country Club. Ticket information will be released soon. For the Madison Community Arts Center, there will be five concerts during the month of February. You can find out more about them and purchase tickets at MadisonArtsNJ.org. For the Museum, for the Madison Arts, MACA, has begun the process of creating a new state of the art website. It's the first step towards a completely integrated media program that will interface with multiple platforms, live, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Google. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Before I get to the Health report, just as a piece of information, our newly redesigned RoseNet website will launch on Tuesday, January 21, so look for that. And then, from the Health Department, a reminder that influenza vaccine is still available for residents of all ages. It is not too late to receive the vaccine. This season, flu illness started occurring mid-November in Morris County, which is earlier than recent years, and if you've been following the news, there's evidently, it's rampant right now throughout the state of New Jersey. 2020 pet licensing for dogs and cats is in progress, and with licenses being issued by the Clerk's Office, either online, you can, you can fill out the form and then pay by check, or you can come in person to the Hartley Dodge Memorial Clerk's Office. Radon kits are available from the Health Department Office, free of cost to residents. Just call the Health Department, 973-593-3079, to make arrangements for pickup. Thank you.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Arling.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Electric Department, the department reports that the standby crew was called out on Sunday, January 12, at 7:30 in the morning, for power outage on Vinton Road. It was determined that a squirrel had tripped the fuse, and power was restored in one hour. Department of Squirrels. The, the Electric Department continues to replace tornado-damaged poles and make permanent electric repairs, following the event last fall. And, the department has been performing underground maintenance in the transformer vaults that are located, these are below-grade structures located primarily downtown, serving our commercial district. The maintenance work here includes checking the sump pumps for proper performance, and cleaning debris and leaves from the area. The Water Department has completed testing for a new eight-inch water main installed for the 34 Walnut Street condos. The, the water main has passed the required tests, and this new water main and fire hydrant brings a total of borough hydrants to 621 fire hydrants. That's all for Utilities.
Thank you very much. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council received an email dated January 6, 2020, from Resident Yana Kane Estrig of Bedford Court regarding the reorganization. I think I mentioned that right. And another email dated January 13, 2020, from the Bellew Avenue Restaurants, residents, excuse me, Bellew Avenue residents regarding development at the Rexford Tucker Apartments on Chateau Theory.
Thank you very much. And now, we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to the items on the agenda discussion, and also, any of the resolutions that are on the consent agenda. So, today, we are discussing open space and capital budgets, and review their status, and then also, master plan, a resolution related to the master plan. The, these are the following resolutions that are part of the consent, so you'll know to either comment on them, or at least understand what's in the consent. Resolution 35, designating employer representative for controlled substances and alcohol use testing policies for commercial drivers, and that authorizes Ken O'Brien as a primary DER, and Linda Sawyer as secondary. Resolution 36 is amending the employee practice policies and procedures manual to coincide with, this is a section on substances and alcohol use and testing policies for commercial driver licenses. Resolution 37 is appointing Trevor Galino to position a temporary part-time meter reader at $14 an hour, and no benefits. Resolution 38 is rejecting all bids for the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza restoration. That's because the lowest bid at $1.8 million exceeded the appropriation ordinance. Resolution 39 is authorizing $1,400 municipal funds for the public outreach tools, which we'll be hearing about shortly, on municipal plan. This is coming from the planning board account. Resolution 39 is, I just read that one, I've got it in here twice, never mind. Resolution 40 is approving renewal application for bowling alley license for New Jersey entertainment, known as strikes. And 41 is also an amusement device license for strikes. Resolution 42 is approving raffle license submitted by the PTSO Madison High School. Resolution 44, renewal of livery owner's license for Madison Limousine Service for 2020. This is Michael Lekas, Madison Limousine Service in 340, at 340 Main Street. Resolution 45 is ratifying award of purchase of, an order of contract for salt, to Lanix Salt of Lowell, Mass, under the Morris County Co-op Pricing Council, and this is not to exceed $120,000, to be funded through the adoption of the 2020 budget. Resolution 46, authorizing contract for motor gasoline through the Morris County Co-op, not to exceed $150,000, also through the 2020 budget. Resolution 47, contract for diesel fuel through the Morris County Co-op, not to exceed $60,000 under the 2020 budget. Resolution 48, release of restoration bond to 9-19 Greenwood Avenue and 122 Main Street in the amount of $5,033.88. Resolution 49, authorizing payment to to Cefeli and Son General Contracting in the amount of $121,662.49 for the community place reconstruction. This was funded through ordinance 18-2019. Resolution 50 is appointing intern Haley Liu as part-time unpaid intern for the Finance Department. Resolution 51, amending Resolution 32-2020, setting salaries for part-time. This is for the Recreation Director, setting it at $33 an hour. Resolution 52, supporting the Madison Environmental Commission Third Annual Green Vision Forum to be held on March 19, at the Madison Community Arts Center. Resolution 53, authorizing use of community pool public parking lot for the North Star Social Club for a car show event on May 9, 2020. Resolution 54, awarding a contract communications design services and related work to VCOM LLC for amount of $16,250. This is related to the radio upgrade work, and this is appropriated through ordinance 16-2019. And Resolution 55, 2020, and I see Ken in the back there, Dean, a member of the Boy Scouts, he just waved, so thank you for attending here tonight. This is to, he's offered to build and install a pedestrian shelter at the Madison Public Library. It will have a solar-powered charging station in there, so if there's any questions, we'll do that, number three on the agenda, otherwise, it'll be part of the consent agenda. And so, those are the resolutions and the agenda. Anyone wishing to comment on any of those, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go to agenda discussions. And this is open space and capital review. Our CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to talk about open space, and we're going to talk about the five-year capital plan. Council President Vitale went through the proposed hearing schedule, so I'm not going to repeat that, but it's just good to have it in the document here, in case anyone online happens to be looking at the document, they'll see the proposed schedule. The agenda for this evening is to discuss the annual budget process and schedule to review the 2019 open space trust fund activity, and to review the five-year capital plan, real brief review of the five-year capital plan. Some of this will look very similar, and I'm not going to take too much time on it. Again, it's there for people who are kind of new to the process, but the budget that the council works on touches many different points, and we go around, around the wheel here, from open space to capital, to utilities, to the municipal budget, to the department operating. Everything circulates around the strategic planning guidelines created by Ben Wolkowitz and his, the members of those committees a number of years ago. Three entities that are in the municipal budget, there are actually three separate budgets, and the council vote, when the council votes to adopt the budget, that big rectangular document that we put out, you're really approving three operating budgets. One for the current fund, which is the main budget, includes police, fire, public works, buildings, grounds, libraries, sewage, garbage, and alike. One for the electric utility, a separate budget for the electric utility, which includes fields, field operations, back office billing. And then, same for the water utility, a third budget for the water utility for field operations, back office, and billing. In addition, there are three capital accounts that the borough has. We discuss these during the budget process. There's a simple capital budget for the municipal, for the general capital fund in the budget, but when you vote on that cap, on that budget, you're not voting to confirm any of that spending. You do that through the separate ordinances, like we'll do this evening, for the roads. So, it's just important to understand that each of the budgets that we just talked about, current fund, water, and electric, each have their own capital fund as well. This is a short, and I'm not going to get too much into it, but we, we talk about it as a budget. I think it's almost better for everyone at home to think of it as a spending plan. A budget denotes the concept that it could change throughout the year. It can change throughout the year, but that would take council action, and that would be considered an emergency appropriation, an emergency that council would have to take. It's better to think of it as a spending plan. You're setting the budgets and the different line items at the beginning of the year, and then, the, the department heads have to stay within those budgeted items throughout the year. So, when you are appropriating money for fuel, you're, we, we tend to... but when you vote on that budget, you're not voting to confirm any of that spending. You do that through the separate ordinances, like we'll do this evening for the roads. So it's just important to understand that each of the budgets that we just talked about, current fund, water, and electric, each have their own capital fund as well. This is a short, and I'm not going to get too much into it, but we talk about it as a budget. I think it's almost better for everyone at home to think of it as a spending plan. A budget denotes the concept that it could change throughout the year. It can change throughout the year, but that would take council action, and that would be considered an emergency appropriation, an emergency that council would have to take. It's better to think of it as a spending plan. You're setting the budgets and the different line items at the beginning of the year, and then the departments have to stay within those budgeted items throughout the year. So when you are appropriating money for fuel, you're, we tend to put a little extra money in there because you don't know what the fuel price is going to be throughout the year. It can fluctuate. Same with rock salt, same with snow removal. We don't know if it's going to be a snowy year or a mild year like we had this past weekend. So it's important to understand that when you vote on this, it's voted on, and it's really hard to change. At home, you can always change your budget if you need to, a little bit more difficult here. So with that, I want to jump right into numbers and talk about the Open Space Trust Fund. The activity in there was pretty benign for the year. The balance at the beginning of the year was 761,000 of available funds. The balance at the end of the year was 739,000. There are a number of reserve funds that are there, and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. Going through the inflows, the major inflow is the tax levy that comes in, it's $642,000. There's revenues for field rentals and user fees. Council last year voted to take those fees and reserve them for future turfing of MRC 1 and 2. So in this, you'll see $89,000 here, and then I actually have it down here going out. So it's coming in, and that money's actually went out and got put into the reserve funds down here. This $367,000 was about $280,000 last year. Add the $90,000, and you get 367 this year. So that pop has been reserved. I know there are people that that's important for, so I just want to make sure that it's denoted and it's there. Interest income for $23,000. And then, as we've noted in the past, the past council meetings, there's oftentimes additional contributions that come from projects. And the dog park, there was an outside group that raised funds, so a portion of the money came from open space and a portion of the money came from outside donations and funds. The outflows, the largest two items were an appropriation for Dodge Field bathrooms that Councilwoman Byrne referenced earlier today. Ordinance 54, 2019, was $363,000 that was taken out of the Open Space Trust and Reserve for that project. As that project goes, that's, we'll spend money down on that. The other was the MRC debt payments. And I have the debt schedule here. There is $145,000 in principal that was paid this year on the land, $85,000 in principal that was paid on the turf field, $71,000 in interest on the land, $25,000 interest on the principal. All that adds up to 326,830. So, you know, me, I always like to foot these things and show you what I'm talking about. I talked about this line here. I read all those numbers. The combination of all those numbers is 326,830. And yay, you know, I like to show it. It's right there, 326,830 for the outflows, for the bond payments. There were a number of other items, Luke Miller retaining wall, and repairs to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, Conservation Management Plan, and other expenditures. Down below, we talk about the reserved funds. $300,000, which has been carried forward in this fund for a number of years, is a restricted gift for remediation or offer recharge. That can be appropriated by council when an appropriate project comes that fits that gift criteria. There's the reserve for the MRC, which I talked about, for the turf reskinning. And then there's $710,000 in Green Acres Fund that's dedicated to paying down the MRC land acquisition. We have $210,000 in this account right now. There's a $500,000 award that we received from the state, we just haven't gotten the money in yet. But I wanted to note that we have $710,000. So every year, money comes out of this reserve amount and comes up here to pay the principal amount. You'll see $145,000 there. That came out of reserve to help pay for the land portion of the debt. So it paid a big chunk of that MRC debt. So what does this all mean in terms of availability of funds on an annual basis? I think the easiest way to look at it is to take the tax levy and the money that we have for the next few years for Green Acres, which is about $780,000, and subtract out $320,000. Okay, we have about $450,000 a year that we can appropriate out of this fund and stay on track and not have the level in the bathtub or the amount that's in the fund drop. So about that amount can be appropriated every year. There are a lot of potential projects. And this is the list of the projects here. Over $7 million in total costs if we were to appropriate all of them. The front plaza of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building, we have some money reserved, we may need more to fix that. East wing renovation, it's the renovation of the old police department and court. We have environmental remediation in the back from an old underground storage tank. Other potential projects, nothing has been appropriated, nothing has been promised, but these are items that have been discussed or are out there are the Dodge Field lighting, the Dodge Field playground, an all access playground at the MRC that would be a playground that would be accessible for all children, including handicaps. An additional turf field at Madison High School, museum repairs, and Lucy D playground improvements. The biggest on this is the additional turf field at Madison High School. Hartley Dodge, if you lump them together, is a biggie too. We originally thought that turf field was going to be like a million, a million and a half or more. With lighting, it's over $3 million, a million dollars alone in lighting. So we'll have to have some more discussions about that, but I want council to just understand that there's a lot of, $700,000 may sound like a lot of money in this pot, and we'll get additional tax levy coming in, but there's a lot of obligations already with the debt payments, and there's a lot of potential projects. So I think as these projects get a little closer to potential fruition, we'll be coming to council and talk, administration will come to council and talk to you about them. It's just really important to know that they're out there. Are there any questions?
Deb?
Before, I just know before we go on, on that list, how, I guess the question becomes, how do they get prioritized and where do we, or do we get generalized input? Like for, I'm just thinking, like, you're saying all access playground at MRC, and I realize nothing's been decided. You know, I get that. But to me, why not Dodge Field where more kids would have access to it rather than MRC? Like, so is there time for us, if these projects do look like they might move forward?
I think it makes sense to have some discussion, either individual discussions or, and then when the time is right at council, if it looks like a number of these are going to come to fruition in a short period of time, I think council needs to have that discussion. So, and it's up to you, you all appropriate.
What happens is, that was a Pat Rowe question. Number one. And what happens is, they come, first come, first serve kind of thing. I mean, we haven't ever had yet a whole handful of projects bombard the Open Space Committee, have to review them, and then make recommendations to the council. They've been coming, you know, once in a while, and then you have the debt payments, which is a constant. Once they come, then there's a discussion amongst all the different components of the Open Space Committee, and then a recommendation is made, and ultimately, it's the council that decides. So I know that they are looking at Dodge Field Playground for complete redo that is, you know, handicap accessible and everything also. I mean, it's using new material for the surface and everything. So, but it's just a question of, you know, who gets, puts it together, who says it's a priority? I mean, you know, we've said that the playground at MRC is really important, and now Dodge Field's playground is aging out and having grandchildren and going over to the Verona Playground, which is unbelievable. I can't believe Madison doesn't have something equivalent to that. So.
And I think in this process is, one of the reasons we list these is while we've had the kind of luxury of being able to first come, first serve, we always know what's in the hopper. So sometimes it's first come, no serve because we know something bigger is in the hopper. Maureen?
Well, and also, it's, there's a public fundraising component in many of these projects, so that it would also be which group of people come to the table with their share of the project, no?
Well, yes and no. The policies and procedures identify all the different kinds of groups. We've got the government aspect where there are no grants and there are no funding partners with the public. So, for example, in the case of the playground at Dodge Field, it's aging out, it needs to be replaced, so the engineering department has been discussing that with us. In the case of the MRC, especially when I was recreation liaison, we talked about having a, you know, similar to what we did with Dodge Field years ago, a group that would fundraise for us.
Right.
And hopefully that will happen. And we always ask any group that comes before us, have you reached out for grants or some, you know, some form of, because we like to have, you know, the 20%.
Right.
And I think Dodge Field is a good example of the kind of contrasting projects of something like a playground, when you look at what can be done basically or with greater involvement and getting energy around some fundraising, that could be a great dream, and we have Verona Playground right there, versus bathrooms, which is really, I would say, this body should be making sure we have usable bathrooms in our public facilities. And so that's, I think, how you kind of look at the.
No, I think when I said that the public buy-in, I wasn't referring to the bathroom facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
I was referring to the actual equipment and construction of the playground.
Yep. Deb?
They're fundraising, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if someone, I don't know if anyone's fundraising for the playground.
Nothing, but I think, obviously, to be successful, you have to have a good plan, and that generates excitement, and so we're working on that.
Okay. That's my follow-up question, is who proposes, like, I know some of them, it's very obvious who would propose, you know, what it is, but with stuff like the playground or even the lighting at Dodge Field, who's the one that comes to Open Space and says, we want to, like, who puts that together?
Oh, also, like, Bob Vogel and Frank Russo in particular, you know, with Zach, I mean, if recreation, you know, going, oh my God, our lights are really bad, like baseball, that was a perfect example last year. The parents said, look, our fields are in really bad shape. And so we sat down with them, and they met with the Open Space, and they went, oh, okay, we can do this, we've got money to help with this. And so that was pushed ahead and came before the council or the Open Space.
Right, yeah, I remember that.
And then they made the contribution. Yeah, it's the various groups that will, you know, say, too, we need, you know, Dutch Holland would love to have an indoor basketball facility, so all of us would, but we need some help there.
So that was discussed when I was on Rec Advisory's Soccer Club app.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the open space part of this? All right, let's go to phase two.
Phase two of the meeting you're talking about, the presentation?
Yes.
Five-year capital plan this evening, as was mentioned by Council President Vitale and Councilwoman Byrne, we have two ordinances on, one for road reconstruction and one for milling and overlay. Total is about 1 million, sorry, $2,675,000. That is obviously more than half of our total general capital ask. I'm not going to look at utilities, we'll talk about that at the next council meeting. So there are other small items within here, sanitary sewer capital, you know, we do a lot of lining, small amounts of building improvements, large amount for the fire department for engine three. Once that gets funded, hopefully, once the budget is approved and we confirm that we have enough money for the general capital for $4.6 million, we would come to council, appropriate that final ordinance. There was already money appropriated in prior years for engine three. And in talking to Fire Chief Lou DeRosa, he said he's about 70% of the way there with the bid specifications. Once the money would be appropriated, he'd come to council, talk about what he wants to order, and then we'll go ahead and order it. Takes about 10 months, eight to 10 months to get the truck in. So we would, because it's custom fabricated, it would be in around this time next year. So just to give you an indication of one of the other larger items on the five-year capital plan. Just so everyone in the public knows, this five-year capital plan details, as I said, each one of these categories, lots of them under engineering, but also police, fire, library, recreation, electric, and water utility. They each have a five-year projection of their needs, and this is available on RoseNet. If you go under the annual budget process page on RoseNet, you'll find every presentation for this year, and actually, you can go back a number of years and look at five-year capital plans back three, four years, if that's what you like to do. So I don't know if there's anything specific in here that you want to talk about. I do want to say that in general, we're really good at our two to three-year capital planning. It is, I think there are other, well, we know there's a potential, there are large project coming in '24, '25 for the radio system that council receives some information on, so that would be out in '23, '24. These numbers here are very good. If anything, we're going to be working with Bob Vogel to try to trim this number back. I say that because our capital needs of $4.6 million, which are estimated, we can satisfy those on a pay-as-you-go basis, assuming that in this year's budget, we appropriate 3.5 million for the general capital improvement fund. For those who know the budget real well, last year we appropriated 3.8 million. So there is a reduction in the amount that we're putting towards capital. A couple of reasons. I think we're doing a good job catching up on our capital needs. We don't have a whole lot going out in '23, '24, especially with roads and other projects, number one. Number two, it is going to be a tight budget year for other reasons, for the garbage removal costs and other costs, recycling, hauling, and some other increase in the pension costs for the police and fire. There's some pretty major increases in those lines. You'll see that February 10th, but in order to have a reasonable budget and a maintainable budget with a small tax increase, we reduced the amount, at least in our minds, at this moment, council will make that final determination, from 3.8 million to 3.5 million in this budget for capital. So the good news is we continue to believe we can fund everything on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Questions or comments? All right, I think you set the stage well, right? Are we all, are we?
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Again, our, thanks to all the following meetings, we'll be hearing more and more budgets. Master Plan, Austria.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the 2019 council had approved and supported the redo of our master plan. Our last master plan was, complete master plan was done is 1992. Now, we've had some reexams, but right, what we're going to do now is create a master plan for the 21st century, and we want public input. So it's being proposed that we hire this company. Our planner has investigated several different sources, and it will create a website that is interactive, and also she can aggregate data. And it's a $2,800 expenditure, half of it will come out of the budget for the, her master plan budget that she proposed, and the other half would be from the borough. So this is, and we need to approve this hopefully tonight because of the way the schedule's going is, public input is going to start occurring in February. It's a very tight schedule. is, public input is going to start occurring in February, it's a very tight schedule. Then we will have public meetings, and, but we plan to have a survey on that website.
So, Ostry, that website is, sorry, John. We would go as, the public would go and put input into it? What's the...
Survey? What, yes. What would happen is, there'd be, Michael's going to be working with Susan. So we will have information on RoseNet and a link, and if you, if, I gave you the information about Westfield, if you went on that, even I could do it, which was a miracle. So, you know, I clicked on the Westfield site, or you click on the Madison site, it will take you directly to this site, and then it will talk, tell the people about the master plan, the elements that we're studying. There'll be a survey that asks them for input on what they envisioned their town.
Okay.
And then there'll be constant information, and hopefully, and you'll be able to see people's feedback immediately and things like that, I mean, everybody will be.
And Westfield had about 800 residents respond and provide input, which on a percent basis is very small for Westfield, but 800 is nothing to shake, you know, that's impressive, I think, so, and I think it's very worthwhile.
And Madison's going to be way more responsive.
I think so.
Yes.
Excuse me, what was the name of the, what's the name of that software? I'm sorry. I know it's in the material, but I...
Yeah, it is, it's called publicinput.com or something.
Is that what it is? Okay, thank you.
Parsippany went through a master plan process, it's probably ongoing, and I noticed that they circulated flyers, they hung them downtown with a QR code, so you could scan the QR code with your phone, you know, if you were at Drip or, you know, Madison Bagel, and it would take you right to the site on your phone. So it just seemed like another great way to, you know, promote public awareness and bring more people into the survey. I wonder if that feature would be an option through this system.
Oh, good, well, you know...
Michael just wrote that down.
Because you're on the committee also, you should, yeah, email Susan.
Yeah, I think that's great.
That'd be great.
And then my other pesky question, which kind of stems from what Rachel was saying, are there ways to prevent people from going in and taking it over and over and over again?
I think so, I mean, I think there are...
Often, I don't know, it might be IP address-driven that it will prevent, but we can pull...
I'm just thinking, you open three different browsers on your computer, you use your phone, then my three kids, I use their phone, and then my, you know, just, if there's some way to ensure that hopefully, people get in only once or twice, rather than...
Yeah, and I think even if it is a tool, it's not an official polling or voting mechanism, so I think that's, you know, the committee will have to, as they read things, you know, sort through what might be stuff in the box.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, this is just one tool, along with, you know, in-person workshops, design sessions, roundtables, there'll be many different venues and opportunities to gather public input from, you know, business owners, residents, families, seniors, our university neighbors, so it's just one way to reach people that might not be able to join in any of those forums, so just another touch point.
Any other questions or comments? This is Resolution 39 on the consent. As I mentioned before, we have the Eagle Scout here, does anyone have any questions or comments on the Eagle Scout project that we can put them on the spot and make them feel nervous and come up and answer? But, Kim, why don't you come on up to the...
And explain it, yeah.
Yep, tell us about, he did, he was at the Library Board of Trustees last week, and they presented the, and they said it was, gave them a recommendation on it, so, Kim, why don't you go ahead and share the project?
Yeah, so it's a solar-powered charging station that I'm going to be putting in the library for people to sit outside and read a book and charge their phone or their laptop while either working outside or reading a book. It'll be covered over a bench that I will plan to take, one of the benches that are already there and move them, or move it, so that I don't, so that it's more symmetric across the side of the bridge. It'll be positioned, if you're walking across the bridge up into the library courtyard, it's to the right, sort of a piece of grass strip there, it'll be somewhere in that area. That area, I found, provides ample sunlight for charging batteries, which will run an inverter, and then that will have an outlet somewhere near the bench, which you can use to charge your devices.
That's very cool.
Cool project.
I have a question. Is that project going to be close to the library itself?
Yes.
Or is it, is it part of the path that goes up to Palm Roy?
No, it'll be on the library.
Library, okay.
So when you're talking about the bridge, it's the bridge, as you come down Belmont, that bridge right there, I assume, the one close to the bridge, closer to the woods?
Closer to the front of the library.
Yep, yep.
So like, when you walk up past the library sign that shows the hours?
It's that one, okay, so the one further down, okay, thank you for...
It's a great project.
I'm gonna put you on this.
Absolutely.
I think it's very creative, and I think it's going to be a great one, and the question that did come up at the Library Board of Trustees, will there be adult supervision? Yes, there will be, so, as he does the work, but it sounds like it's a great hands.
It's a great project, I love it, but the only question, when the, words, the outlet, will it be USB, or do you have to have like the brick for whatever your charger is?
No, I'm having both for just ease of use.
Great. Good luck, it's great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and so this is Resolution, I read it off before, number...
It's in there somewhere.
Yep. Resolution 55, it's on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no ordinances for hearing, because this is our first regular meeting of the year, so now we're on to invitations for discussion number two. This is when you may comment on any topic, and as always, try to keep your, come up to the podium, say your name, your address, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for January the 27th, 2020. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 1-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,610,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2020 road reconstruction projects, related work, and miscellaneous projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2020.
Second.
And as noted, this, our CFO just covered the capital budget, and as a reminder to those, we have done very well by making sure we are funding the road projects early on, so we get the bid packages out on the street ahead of the competing towns, so. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Ordinance 2-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,650,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2020 milling and overlay projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions are 35-2020 to R. 55-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, you have now been approved. There is no unfinished business, the approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher register?
Current fund, $1,6824.3. General capital fund, $140,965.91. Electric operating fund, $485,054.97. Electric capital fund, $95,110.8. Water operating fund, $9,269.26. Water capital fund, $86,807.91. And the trust, $7,085.12. Total is $1,842,117.28.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, in the new business, I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation, liaison to the Madison Area YMCA, this is a new position, we've had a liaison to Project Community Pride, but we have a partnership through the teen center also. I envision this, the next time we revise our bylaws, becoming part of the health portfolio, which is why I've asked Deb Cohen to step into this role. So it's Deborah Cohen as council liaison to Madison Area YMCA, Board of Health, Benjamin Laffier, alternate number two, Historic Preservation Commission, Max Hart, unexpired two-year term through December 31st, 2020, Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Committee, Christine Boyle, nine bucking, I've been doing the addresses, that's through December 31st, 2022, Patriotic Celebrations, Bruce Simmons, through December 31st, 2020, Sustainable Madison Committee, Board of Ed Rep, Stephen Tindell, through December 31st, 2020, and the Master Plan Committee, this is ad hoc committee to work along with our planner on the master plan, as Ostry Bailey outlined before. So council members, Ostry Bailey, Rachel Erlich, Ann Huber, planning board member, Tom Lewis, planning board member, Joseph Santoro, zoning board member, Kathleen Caca Valley, ME-C, Sustainable Madison member, Dave Huber, Luber, HPC member, Melissa Hunahan, Open Space member, John Morris, DDC member, Pat Rowe at large. I ask for a approval from the council.
Mayor, I move the foregoing council and council confirmation of those appointments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all, we're off and running.
Ms. Ann Huber?
Yes, she's good. She's... He said he would not have been able to make tonight's meeting a work thing came up, but he said he's gonna, he's gonna look at, he's gonna look at the video to see what questions...